Good evening, everyone. And my desk is 6:30.
Strange, isn't it?
On time. Welcome to our board meeting, and if we could, and also welcome to the commission. What we have is kind of a quasi-joint board meeting. The way it'll work is we will start with our agenda. We will go ahead and do our roll call first, and then if it's okay, Mr. Richardson, we'll have you guys do your roll call. That way, we're all kind of called into the same meeting.
Absolutely.
And then we will execute our agenda. There's some place where we will overlap in that work session area. We love some mutual due discussion. I think then what we will plan to do is go into executive session, and you guys will continue into your agenda. Is that correct?
Absolutely. And for the record, Mr. President, on our agenda here, we had, we were going to go into executive session.
Right, we should have.
But our attorney could not make it tonight. He advised us to not discuss legal issues to him with the district without the president.
So you ought to know what was gonna happen. It's part of our meeting, because this is the first joint meeting we've had, and there are some, we have our legal counsel, Mr. Giardini is here, and there are certain things we want to begin to update the commission on. When the CEO piece occurs, there will be quite more extensive updates. But there are things that are currently presently pending in terms of litigation, things like that, so we thought that this would be a good opportunity. And the expectation was Mr. Miller was going to be in attendance also. He could not be here, and he requested that we not meet in the executive session with legal counsel. So we will just forego that until further later date in time. Could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Ballard?
Here.
Mr. Demakia?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Present.
Mr. Sturgill?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here. And this time we'll have a pledge.
Should we roll call as well?
Sorry, go ahead.
The commission, can we have a roll call?
Mrs. Hall?
Here.
Mr. Monteleone?
Present.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Present.
Mr. Richardson?
Here.
Dr. Solis?
Present.
This time we'll have your pledge. Mr. Ballard, you lead us, please?
I'd lead us. To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice
This time, I would entertain our, of course, we have any visitors or special recognition anywhere. We'll entertain our first hearing of the public. This will occur at the beginning part of our meeting, and there is a second hearing of the public later in the meeting that will be after we have our group discussion. So if there's anyone who would like to address the board at this time, and we would give you the opportunity, please go to the podium, or if you need to, we can just pull you up to the table and state your name, and then please address the board.
Okay. Will you be recording left half? I can't reach.
Understood.
Okay.
Hey, Rhoda.
I live at 1904 West 22nd Street, Lorain, Ohio. Since you all want to begin the meeting with hearing from the public, I thought it would be later. But I have to say to you, I still feel the same way as I did when we first came. I think it's an outrage what has transpired here in our school district. One of the reasons, number one, I think this is taxation without representation, is a takeover. I resent it, and I think my community does, but they have not come out, but I think perhaps they will. We elected you, Mr. Williams, and the other four board members as our representatives to set up the policies and procedures for the education of our children here in our community. I think it is an outrage, as I said again, taxation without representation for the government to come in, for the state or anyone to come in and make the decisions for us without the input of our taxpayers. And we people in this community who have elected you guys to be our representatives and to represent our children. I still feel that it's wrong, and will say so. We had some problems, and we had someone who was in here who would have done some things to try to rectify the situation that they stepped into in the first place. This isn't something that happened overnight. And out of the whole state of Ohio, you have elected two school districts, all of which are predominantly minorities. And I think it is done for a purpose. You're out to help the government to privatize education. You're not allowing the people to make the decisions as to the educational process for their kids, and it is wrong. And I think it is very much, it's a slap in the face to our constitution. It's a slap in the face to me, and a slap in the face to my community. And I want to tell you, I highly resent it, and the way it has been processed and the way it's going. And I hope, and I think that the Lorain community will come out and let you know, all of you know, and the government, the High Department of Education, because this is something that, even through the consent decree, does it still stand forth. It was a slap in the face. I think we have not even had the Lorain NAACP to come and sit at the table in the beginning to find out what this community felt and what the minority segments of the community felt was wrong and what needed to be rectified in our school district. And I'd let you know, I am highly upset, and I'm highly enraged, and I did not ever think that we would come to this. But here we are. And I just wanted to say I'm thoroughly outraged and disappointed.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the board at this time? There will be a second opportunity towards the end portion of the meeting. At this time, I would like a motion to approve or amend the minutes from the July 3 special board meeting.
So moved. Support.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Demakia?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes. Is there any old business for discussion, gentlemen? This time, we move on to the report and recommendations of the treasurer. Mr. Hill?
Recommend for approval items 8.01 through 8.03.
So moved. Support.
Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Demakia?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes. This time, we would move on to the report and recommendations of the superintendent. Dr. Graham?
Thank you, Mr. Williams. And I know we discussed this a few different ways. This will make sure that we're, I'm providing what you requested. I know we're gonna do a couple presentations tonight, one on the fiscal matters and one on data, and I've heard it two different times, one in this section in terms of reports from the superintendent. It's also a discussion being part of the second meeting, which will be the commission meeting, so I'm open for either.
Okay, so at this time, can we go ahead and suspend that presentation?
Yep.
Until the joint meeting, and we'll go through with the recommendations.
Thank you. And I'd like to walk on item 10.20 in personnel matters. I'd like the board to consider for approval 10.01 to 10.20 personnel matters.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Through the president to Dr. Graham, can you, you know, I've noticed, you know, there are a lot of special ed hires happening, and we know the importance of hiring special ed teachers, but would you be willing to give us a reason as to why we're hiring so many special ed teachers at this particular time?
We had a number, and Ms. Gocic could probably elaborate. We had a lot of teachers who were teaching students with disabilities who chose to take other positions in our district. They were certified for multiple areas, special education classes, and they chose to attend with.
And is this, you know, I don't, let's say we're at eight to 10 positions, is this typical for an academic year to see that many teachers leaving a district in one particular subject matter, or is it just the nature of kind of the work?
Actually, I think there were more. I think there were 13 at one point, not too long ago. Looking for a nod for Mrs. Gocic, I know that is not typical. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, many of these were not, they were folks, this is some motion internal in the district. They've left one position to another position in the district, and it's at sometimes musical Any other questions?
May I ask a question of Mr. Richardson?
Sure.
Earlier in a letter, you asked the board not to make any decisions that would have lasting effect, which hiring these teachers would have. Is that still the feeling of the commission?
I think in any particular situation, you need to be flexible, and given the amount of special ed teachers that are on this agenda tonight, and their work would take place effective 8/21, you know, I don't think it would be prudent to stop this from happening at this time.
Thank you.
Given the needs of that particular department and where we're at, we're not gonna put our most vulnerable students in the way of politics, personnel issues, or anything of that nature.
Okay.
I think it's important that we do what's best for our kids.
Okay, thank you.
So let's call this to vote, please. Roll call.
Let me hear a motion for a second.
Is there a motion?
So moved. Support.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Demakia?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
I'd like the board to consider for approval 11.01 to 11.04.
So moved.
Discussion? Who is the second? Roll call, please.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Demakia?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
I'd like to pull item 11.05, as the MEU is not completed. I'd like the board to consider for approval 11.06.
Oh, let me find that. I can't see without my glasses.
So moved. Support.
We're in the final stages of 11.05, which is not yet ready to be.
Okay, so we have a motion and support.
What is the motion?
11.06.
Just the one item?
That's correct.
Okay.
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Second.
So moved.
Second.
Second from Giacca.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Demakia?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
I would like the board to consider for approval 11.07.
So moved. Support.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Demakia?
Stay.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
I'd like the board to consider for approval 11.08 through 11.10.
So moved. Support.
Discussion? Wait a minute.
You're 11.
Yeah, the official one is different than this one. There's 11.
Okay. Who, I'm sorry, who was the support from?
Mrs. Unbelievable.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Demakia?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
I'd like the board to consider for approval 11.11.
So moved.
What is 11.11?
It is the...
The difference is, is we pulled the 11.05 to what's distributed to them. That contract already pulled, and we shifted it up.
All right. So 11.05 was not in yours, but it is in mine. 11.10 would have been, what I have is 11.11.
Okay, so then, I need a motion to, we have previously just approved up through 10, and we need to rescind that because that should have been through 09.
11.09, that's correct.
So there's a mix-up in the numbering.
Nice.
So what we were voting on, we need to, so can we rescind the motion in the vote for 11 point?
There's 11.8 to 11.10.
For 11.8 to 11.10.
You want to rescind it?
Yes.
So moved.
Support? I need somebody?
Support.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Demakia?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
My apologies for the confusion. I'd like the board to consider for approval 11.08, 11.09.
So moved. Support.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Demakia?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
See if I can get this right. I'd like the board to consider for approval 11.10.
So moved. Support.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Demakia?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Demakia?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
See if I can get this right. I'd like the board to consider for approval 11.10.
So moved. Support.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Demakia?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Stay.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes. Okay. What happens is occasionally there are conflicts, be it employment or other things, and so we make sure that we take those items out of the consent format so that individuals can abstain where relevant, and so that's kind of what that was. Unfortunately, we have an agenda where there's one that has certain numbers, and ours, the numbers don't align. So thank you for your patience as we got through that. At this time, new business. And I think it'd also be appropriate, as we're kind of a transition into this joint meeting space, part of that will deal with the reports from the treasurer and also the reports on the latest test scores for Mr. Olley. Part of this will include some discussion between the commissions about some of the values and the nature of how we begin to move forward in terms of collaboration, identifying there's, of course, gonna be a CEO in place. There is a relationship between the board and the commission, which we want to discuss, not with too much detail, but how we move forward in terms of communication process. Also, there will be a relationship between the commission and the CEO that they will further explore as we will explore our relationship with the CEO. So there's some multiple relationships that'll have to be navigated and managed, and we want to kind of set some of the parameters or the expectations around that. We won't be real specific in terms of dates, but we will be, I think, specific in what our intentions are and what our objective outcomes are. Also, of course, everyone here, I'm sure, has seen the latest news of the morning in terms of the finalists being announced. So though that search is still in process, even based on that, there is a certain amount of this that's now public, and it will be inappropriate for us to have certain discussions about this process outside of the public preview. So there will be some questions that we will allow in discussion around that, understanding that there are certain things in that process, or especially specific to personnel, that are not appropriate for discussion outside of the executive session and the personnel piece, and we will be very conscientious not to violate that. Tony, Mr. Giardini, if we tend to get in a place where we are in some area where we shouldn't be in a public discussion, and we don't seem to have been able to acknowledge that amongst ourselves, please help us out, and I'm sure it'll be somewhat lively. And this is part of the new business. That's kind of why it's here, and it's old business and new business. It's something that's been going on for a while, but it's now in our face, and we have to discuss it. I think, also, I know Mr. Demakia has a prepared statement, and we will give him the opportunity to do that. I will, Tony, do you want us to start the conversation first?
How do you want to do it?
Yeah, I think the first thing that we want to do is, because I'll be honest, there's a lot of angst, and when we start talking about this process, there will be emotional expression. People are very passionate about this from every place. Primarily, it's a place of being concerned about the best interests of students, and when folks are concerned about those things, their expressions will be passionate. So before we get into that overly impassioned place, why don't we have, Josh, you start your presentation on those numbers?
Sure.
And then, Mr. Olley, we'll have you present your piece next, so that we get some of those objective things out into the discussion, and then we will proceed with, is that okay with everybody?
I'm sure.
All right.
Does that work correctly?
And again, does anybody have any comments or questions about process so far, or what we're getting ready to do next? Mr. Richardson, do you have anything that you want to add to any of this at this stage?
Not at this time, members of the commission?
No. So at this stage, this is a joint shared piece, so anybody who has questions, you don't have to go through the chair and all that stuff, just get the question out there, whether it's about the numbers, what do they mean, five-year forecast, whatever questions you have, it's open for all of us except the public. We will give the public another opportunity. If you hear some things that you want to comment on, please take notes, and when we have the next part of the public hearing, you'll be able to ask those questions or make those statements. But this is for the benefit of the members of the board and the commission. Thank you.
I prepared a packet. I'll kind of work through it slowly. Please stop me if questions, concerns, any clarifications. Just to kind of run through some of the brief assumptions and input, obviously, there's hundreds of assumptions that go into this, keeping in mind, it is solely a fork, the five-year forecast is solely general fund monies. So, and again, I don't mean to, I'm kind of giving you a brief summary, I don't mean to dumb it down too much, or either way, I'm just kind of trying to give you the basic gist and give you an opportunity to discuss. So the process, where this comes together, these numbers come together, I do a formal budget process and sit down with each one of the budget managers. If you are responsible or directly responsible for a building budget, a department budget, things like that, we sit down and walk through line by line and discuss needs for the next year. So kind of a history on that, when I came in in October, I was working with a prior treasurer's budget, so I kind of built that around his assumptions and was able to then go through in February, March timeframe and meet with each of these individual budget managers, and it was a bit of a different process. Previously, he came together with everybody in a group, and everybody just kind of threw out ideas. By sitting down individually, I think it allowed for people to get more attention to their areas and just kind of walk through adds or even, you know, possible savings in some areas. So, and then also, input from the board, input from the superintendent, sitting down and discussing future plans. There is an update and kind of to walk you through that. This does take into account, the way it's pieced together, and I'll go through the packet first, because that's probably gonna be easier. I have my May updated forecast prior to year-end numbers, prior to the state budget coming out. That's what was approved at the end of May. I have the assumptions attached then, and then beyond that, what I did was take and then drop in to that May forecast, the year-end numbers as of the end of June. Based on that, we did finish slightly better in the year, about 2.2, 2.3 million better than previously forecasted, and then also took into account the new state budget, which starts in fiscal year 18 with an increase of roughly about 2.6 million, and then that compounds over the life of the forecast with an additional roughly 2.6 million coming in fiscal year 19, so you're looking at around 5.1, 5.2 million from 19 on. So you can see the differential from the May update to adding and taking those into account. We went from having a roughly about a 6.7, almost 6.8 million dollar deficit in fiscal year 20 to, if renewals considered and everything, because that is separated out on item, or on line item 11.02, if those do pass and we go through the formal process of renewing those, we actually finished the five-year forecast in the black, have about a million dollar carryover into fiscal year 22. So, and that, the backup to those two changes are beyond that as well. This is our SM2, which shows our fiscal year-to-date actual numbers and how we finished and where that differential is. And then it also shows the House, Bill 49, State Foundation adjustments that we are looking at receiving year over year. So...
I might add...
Please.
That money does follow students, right?
Yes.
So we won't retain in the entire 2.6 million. You've already, you've calculated that.
That is all factored into this.
But I just wanted to make a point, for the commission especially, that state foundation money follows this.
It is.
Does it also encompass to add vouchers?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, when you look through this, you have your revenue sources, and you'll see that full 2.6 factored into the revenues, but then you go to the expenditures, and a lot of those expenditures are built into there, and I actually built in about 1.5 million per year in expected loss possible based on kind of what the trend was in the past for students leaving, going to charter schools and such.
So that's why, you know, in terms of the forecast piece, first, by the governor's new budget coming out in May, we could not have those numbers in. And so you saw in the paper, district is solvent, the projected deficit, and so this new forecast, because we knew the budget was gonna happen, but it hadn't happened, so now we can factor that in, and it shows that the district is in the black into 21, correct?
Well, at this point, yeah, it carries into 22. This is not an official forecast. This is just to give us an idea with these numbers coming out. The next forecast to be approved would be in October.
But that's also assuming the emergency levy will renew.
It's not assuming that in here, because it's separating it out. It pulls it off of the line 1.01, that's why you see the drop in 20. You'll see a half a year drop in 20, and then the full year drop in 21, and then it's added back in on line 11.02, just to show the differential, kind of worst-case scenario, best-case scenario, look at it. And we do have an additional levy that will show up on the October forecasts as losing a half-year collection there that will need to be renewed as well for 22. So that's, it'll all shift over one year.
That can first be put on the ballot, the 20, the one expiring in 2020 will, can first go on the ballot in November of next year, is that...
November of...
2018?
So it'll be 19, yeah, November of 2018 would be the first time it can go on.
And then we have...
And the differential between the half a year and the full year collection, that's the difference between us collecting it from the auditor on their calendar year versus our fiscal year. That's why I listed that half a year.
And then as for the other renewal, when could the district go to the ballot to renew?
It'd be November of 20.
20, so, okay.
Oh, I think you can go on and...
It'd be November of 20, because it's 22 that you're seeing the half a year come off. So you figure 21...
Well, the last time it was on the ballot was 2015, so it'll go on the ballot in 2020 again.
It could, but you could do it in 19.
Right.
Yeah, you could do it a full year in advance, so you get almost, oh, you get a full year
But it's critical in the long term that those levies are renewed, correct?
Absolutely.
So you're saying, Mr. Smith, so you're saying three opportunities to pass the renewal prior to it expired?
If you use, if you, if you put it on the, in November of the year before, so we would put it on in 2018. If it failed, then you'd have?
Two more chances.
Two more chances.
Mm-hmm.
And then the other one is the other.
And the entire full year after that.
So we, the board will probably put a renewal on in 2018 in November and 2019 in November, provided both of them pass.
It would be, it wouldn't be 2019, it'd be 2020 for the second one. Because it comes off in calendar year 22, which means that you'd have the opportunity, the final opportunity would be calendar year 21, November of calendar year 21.
Well, that levy first.
And you could do it a full year prior to that, so you could do it in 20.
That levy first passed in 2000.
Okay.
So would it be every five years from that date?
It would be, but that's when it's passed, not when it started being collected.
And collect it in 21.
Yes. Well, it'd be collected in, the final year of collections is 22, calendar year 22. So fiscal year 22, you see a half a year loss.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any more questions?
Just kind of the key assumptions to work through this. And I use these assumptions throughout for both, obviously, just adding in the additional things for the second one. But for real estate revenue, it's held flat with a slight decreasing of roughly 100,000 per year. And that's due to a multitude of things. Could be collection percentage, could be, it's based basically on collection percentage. So, and then state foundation revenue, I initially held it flat all the way throughout, assuming no increase for the state budget, but then the state budget came in. And so you're assuming those increases for 18 and 19, and then it's held flat beyond that. So no increase beyond 19. Salaries and wages are per the current CBA agreements. And then we have the health insurance costs, which are built into the benefits. And those are typically a recommendation from the health trust. And those can come in anywhere from 6% to 10%. I usually average about 7% based on trending in prior years, and that's the increase year over year. And then purchase services, which are your, you know, your contracts, anything that is, you're bringing out an outside resource to bring a service to the district. And that includes additional projects for the leadership team. I mentioned that 1.5 million dollar increase for community schools, open enrollment and the voucher programs. And then supplying materials, which is going to be anything substantial. There's additions to this based on the May update from our meetings. The need for textbooks and additional materials was factored into that. And then the debt service, we do have a note that is eliminating or will be eliminated. Our final payment is in 2018. So, and then I put the two year-over-year comparisons in the final slide in the front there, just to kind of be able to pull them together for you, just to show you the differential. So between the end-of-the-year carryover and the state budget update, it helped to make up that 20 million dollar deficit. So we're in, we're in good financial standing. And this is not considering anything, well, obviously, the October forecast is more of the in-depth forecast. That's when I really look at every line item. The May update is more of what has happened since the October forecast and kind of the tweaks. So when you add on that additional year in October, you take into a lot of other things into account, so. Any questions?
So for the record, would you consider that our fiscal health in the forecasts looking forward is manageable, positive and strong for?
Absolutely. When you, when you're only having to rely on renewals, basically to get you through the length of the forecast, there is very few districts that can make it through an entire forecast and stay in the black. So yes, financially, we are very sound.
Any other questions from anyone or comments?
I will say one other thing in regards to that. We are still technically under fiscal watch. And that was a discussion I had when I first got here about coming out of fiscal watch because we can show two years of fiscal solvency. But they felt that with the direction of academics, that they wanted to keep us in that fiscal watch just to see how one would impact the other.
And that's the criteria of two years?
Typically, they want to see at least two years of solvency. They have other, you know, criteria that they look for and just kind of how it's trending. But that was initially with our, the fiscal rep from the state, when I meet, when I met with her last, she said she was going to take it to her higher-ups and kind of recommend to pull us out of it. She came back to me and said that at this time, they recommended that we stay in it just based on kind of the unknown of the academic side.
Yeah, makes sense. Thank you.
I just wanted to add one more. Obviously, we just received this part to the meeting.
And if you have any questions once you read through it, it's a lot. And I, it's, it's line by line and piece by piece, pulling it all together into that, what looks like a simple piece there, one pager, but there's a lot that goes into it. That's why the assumptions are so in-depth. So as you read through it, if there's something, you have a question, by all means, just shoot me an email or give me a phone call.
Absolutely. But just to add, you know, I look at some of our expense, expenses, and obviously, you know, personnel, salaries, wages are going to be the bulk of our cost.
Of course.
And just given the amount of hires that just happened, I've heard and haven't read and will request a copy of the equity audit. And, you know, when we talk about our hiring practices, do our hiring practices reflect some of the learning or the takeaways from our equity audit? A member of the public, Ms. Lee, made a fine point about, you know, representation, but our taxation, but I think, you know, you can also extend that argument out to talk a little bit about kind of the district finances being taxed here as, as local residents and our dollars unnecessarily staying in the community. Now, we know that, you know, the home rule doesn't exist, and I believe in free markets and think that people should be able to live wherever they want. But I also think with the city schools being one of the largest employers in our district, you know, when we think about hires, we should definitely try to think about our local talent, our local community, and how do we reinvest dollars back into the places where we live, eat, hang out and shop. So, you know, just for the record and moving forward, two things I would like to, you know, just express is, one, making sure that, you know, our hiring practices represent the learning and the takeaway that we see in our equity audit. I think I saw something around, you know, 74% of our student body, our students of color, and only 18% of that same demographic make up our teaching. That isn't an issue that the district has. I mean, you know, you look at colleges across the country and there are some education departments that aren't, you know, to be honest, that people of color aren't necessarily enrolling in. And so you can only, you know, attract what's out there. But at the same time, I think it's important that we do have a strategy at the HR level that targets universities and colleges where people of color are in programs and really try to attract them to our district. I think Lorraine is an international city. I think we have, I think that diversity makes us who we are. And I want to make sure that it's, that our school district and system represents the faces and the people of the community in which we live. Thank you.
And just for the, Mr. Richardson, we do have a plan that's actually in line with what you suggest, a little bit more aggressive.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, we initiated, actually going into this year, we put together last year.
And can we have a copy of that plan?
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns, thoughts?
Thank you, Josh.
Thanks, Josh. This time, we're in phase two of the presentation. Mr. Oly.
Yeah, we have a packet here that I'm not sure everybody has, but other commission members have. We have a slide for each page. We'll spend probably just a few minutes per page. I'm kidding, it's not.
You're here for three years.
But the way we do presentations is although Mr. Oly's the one at the podium and he's got the clicker in his hand, everybody in the audience, we collaborate. So as people have information they want to share, they're going to chime in, so.
Except they can't see it in the audience.
It's right there, right?
Yeah, they can't see it there very well. You should have a screen somewhere where everybody can see it.
Can you see it, Jay?
Yeah.
Okay. I can't see it, I'm going somewhere else.
But you can turn around, Phil. Just turn your seat around, man.
Jim is so helpful.
So, you want to, can I trade you? No, I'm talking about, can I trade you, Jim?
Well, I think I've connected with you on Bill Oly. And what we'd like to talk to you about this evening is, there's been early release of the data for the actual report. So it's released in two phases. And the first phase is a big Excel report that comes and we care and it's aggregated into two sources. The second is, it's in the form of reports that come from the state and they're published in a place called Security and Security. So that's why you see the title that says District Data, Hope Students Communicate. It's a reference that we wanted you to have. And the first 21 pages, it looks like a huge document, but really, the first 21 pages that are in there are all district reports. And the remainder of the document are those same reports that are broken down for each school. So what we're going to look at this evening is the key components such as achievement scores, graduation rates, RPA literacy, and some of the files that the district has been using over the past few weeks. So if you look at page three in the, in the handout that you have, it should be a file under that you have to look like this. And our performance index, the goal here is performance index, see your better for two years in a row, and see your better in our value-added scores. So where do we stand right now in the early release data? The performance index that we're all, it's the same, has a grade of D, 62.2 points, and we have a 51.8%. And there's also a second method for calculating the performance index where school districts earn 1.4, reaching the threshold with the 80% passing, and our grade is F here. So as far as comparison to where we were last year to where we are this year, our grade level remains, our employment grade remains the same. On the next page in your handout, you'll see the graduation rates. The changes for this year are over at the high school on the left-hand side, New Beginnings is on the right-hand side. These two reports together represent the district's graduation rate of 71 points, 71% and 79% for the five-year rate. So this goes, this is a year in arrears for the four-year, for the four-year graduation rate. So that's the class of 2016 and the five-year rate is the class of 2000.
Are they still measuring that by the number of students that started in the ninth grade?
Yeah, they take a look at it as a cohort. So all of those students who started in the cohort as ninth graders are really represented in both. So it's the cohort of the class of 2016. So that class would go back to the cohort that started.
For your students.
Freshmen of 2000.
Right.
So a question in for some clarification because I get confused about it. When we're looking at students who graduated, they're measuring this based on the number of that particular class, what started out as freshmen, correct? And then that's the freshman specifically in that cohort. And what if people move? Does that number, if we can't track those folks, does that number count against our graduation rate still, or is that?
I'll get into the technical documentation to answer your question, but I believe that if they, if they're still in Ohio, then they would, they would count in that.
And the other cohort that brings concern, I was talking to a young lady yesterday and she passed all of her classes, got all her credits and missed the OGT or whatever by one point. She counts against our graduation rate too, correct?
Yes.
Yes. So if there's 20 of those, 25 of those, because I think one of the things that's still challenging and confusing is what does that graduation actually represent? And when a student leaves the district, they move away when they're a freshman or sophomore. They've moved someplace and we can't track them and find out if they graduated, what happened, that number counts against our graduation rate. If 15, 25 students didn't pass the OGT, they have all the credits to graduate, passed all the classes they needed to, could have a three-point something GPA that's highly unlikely and not pass their G, but yet still, and they don't pass the OGT. So their, that cohort is representative of multiple groups that are very different. And I think people don't understand that because even when we're talking about solutions, as we're looking at, at the graduation rate improvement, we have to also consider what kind of administrative pieces we need to do so that we can track them. I mean, somebody's got to chase around people because again, that's, so it's not purely just academic. There seems to be a lot of other pieces. I think also, I heard, I think Tony, you mentioned this, there are some other tests that are they allowing to be substituted in with, along with the OGT to show that a student actually has the aptitude?
Certain pathways are being implemented, how students are graduating.
Who's this mic? I can't hear Mr. Richardson at all.
Your mic.
Absolutely. But also another, a kind of socioeconomic issue that we deal with in our communities is that we have a transient population, right? So you always have people coming in and out of the district. And so to your point about tracking that, it's just, it's just the nature of where we live is a part of it as well, right? Right, and when you have a district with this much transience, again, but that real number shows up in terms of that percentage. So I just want to be clear that, because most of the public does not, is not aware of that. And when they see that number, that number is more complex and represents more dynamics than just, did the kid go to school and are they graduating? I mean, I think this year's graduating class was 432. I looked and I didn't realize in 2016, we graduated 573 students. Is that accurate?
Let me set a little question here.
Yeah.
If you're looking at 2016, 573 is the total number of students that was in the original cohort, one of that four years.
So how many graduated? Do we have that information? It started out with 573. I'd love to know how many were in our graduating class that year. And again, and I would also like to know of those who are not in the graduating class, how many of those were students who we couldn't track? How many of them were students who didn't pass the OGT? Because I think when we add those up, it'll give the educators and everyone who's trying to look at it anodally, a much more realistic approach. I don't know if we, what we've done administratively to track students. And it might want that we need to spend more energy, time and money on tracking students.
And Mr. President?
Mr. President, I wholeheartedly agree with that and also think it's equally important to track students who are graduating and if they enrolled in a two-year college, four-year college, if they have the industry-recognized credentials, so that we have that data as well, right? Some of you guys have the student tracker, you guys use that, you know, very well, but it's, that's been a new phenomenon. I know just, you know, four, three, four years ago, we didn't, we didn't have that data. So I think that's also important as well.
So what effect, many, look at enrollment going back since the beginning of community charter schools. You will see that between the eighth and ninth grade, there is usually an increase of 100 to 200 students. They come in because we were at one time the only high school in the city. Now, I look at this, so you see the academy in the old Saint, in Overland Catholic Horizon, they have a high school. But those are all the kids that are coming from parochial school, eighth grade and community schools. To us, does that have any?
Who typically exit at, for instance, at middle school and then come back to Lorraine High School.
Right. That increase, they're going to be counted four years later.
Right, whoever was in that cohort and enrolled in the school district has been that cohort for four years.
So that takes the number up, meaning more and more kids have to graduate.
Right, and we're looking at the number of 573, just a real quick and dirty math, is around 390, right around 390 to 400 would be the number of students in that graduating class.
And if you look back to that eighth grade, in Lorraine schools, it'd probably be in the 400. So I just always wondered what that increase in students in the ninth grade has, effect it has on four years later. You know, just trying to get anything from this one.
I'd like to just, well, Bill scribbling down some notes, a couple of things very, very, very quickly. We talked about the struggles that we have with students who we can't track and some of us go back to Puerto Rico and they're a little tougher to track. We talked about transancy and the number of students we have at the end of the year is roughly the same. We talked about transancy and the number of students we have at the end of the year is roughly the same as the number of students we have at the beginning of the year, but nineteen percent of them are different. So again, another challenge we face. But the reality is, we have challenges, we have to meet them, those numbers need to be higher. This is the class of two thousand sixteen, so not last year, but the year before. One of the things we recognized fairly quickly is that the program we had at New Beginnings was not a quality program. We put a lot of structures in place, we partnered with the National Dropout Prevention Center, with the national experts in alternative schools. They're walking us through and we're doing their program with fidelity. So we should see as the years go by, those numbers to the right climbing exponentially. And again, I challenge, I think we're gonna work on that one, maybe, maybe work on it next year. In terms of changing the names, all students have needs. New Beginnings, they don't need New Beginning, they just need different supports. So again, it's a, an opportunity for students who don't do a large high school, while we have specific needs that we can meet at an alternative site. So again, I see these numbers climbing dramatically as the numbers, especially in that right box, are more consistent, the reality should be. That's our high school, that's this one.
I'm just saying, which, what page is that? So I was trying to, I can't see, on the left side, it has the eighty-four percent, ninety-one point five percent.
The eighty-four percent is the cohort that finished in four years, the ninety-one percent is the cohort that finished in five years. For the students who attended this bill, well, South Bay, as opposed to New Beginnings.
So, alright, so is this one clear? So this, the left number, the left side represents the graduation in this building where we have students?
Well, South Bay, because it's two thousand sixteen.
Okay, so South, right. It wasn't here, it was there. And then the other numbers are when you build in that other side and you average them out. So again, so, again, and one of the things that's challenging is, again, I think part of our, so we've gotta do better, period. But our focus of intervention is, should be very specific, a specific place. Sometimes it gets frustrating for parents and for us is, we will take medicine that we're willing to be targeted towards this population, and we give that medicine to everybody. And so rather than these students and us being focused on certain things, we say, we've gotta give, we, everybody, everybody doesn't have access. And so rather than giving the greater attention, because there should be more resources dedicated to the place for the greatest challenges, we spread those resources evenly and we create intervention where folks don't need intervention. And that is in, we'll raise the resources. Now, it's a waste of resources there, but it means that the resources that should have been concentrated over here aren't. And so then we have this stigma where everyone's talking about, my daughter just graduated this year. Lots of our kids have graduated recently and they're doing really, really well. But the stigma they're carrying is based on a much smaller percentage of the students. Yet they carry the failure percentage for everybody. If you told folks that in our primary high school, that our graduation rates are this, that's a very different picture than when we add the other pieces. And so part of it is, it is true, we need to improve for all students, but what is also is true is we aren't doing horribly for all students. There are a lot of students who fit into that ninety-one point five percent zone that are the recipients of a good quality of education. And for them to walk around and have to defend, why? Because they're getting full ride scholarships to colleges and universities and they're doing well. And I think, and that's part of the challenge, she doesn't understand with the commission and all these pieces, is there is this cloud that's, the rain clouds over everybody and it ain't raining everywhere. And I think that is a misrepresentation for learning and teaching that goes on in the district. And when we start categorically calling it a failing district, it, yeah, because, because the information that we present does not necessarily explain how complex it is. And that's really frustrating. So that's my piece of graduation, sorry. Thank you for it.
And one of the things that we see walking through the counselor's offices are kids coming in, looking for recommendations, looking for help on which, which path that they should take to source the resources. So graduation is on one side of the spectrum and K to three literacy is on the other side of the spectrum. Last year, our point of grade was a B and this year we moved up to a letter grade of C. But what this really means is that at the beginning of the school year, students take an assessment and we determine if they're on track, not on track. And then we fast forward a year and see how many of those kids that were not on track the previous year are on track the next year. So what we see here is in two thousand fifteen, sixteen, we had one hundred fifty-six kindergarteners who were identified as not on track. At the same time, in first grade, in the, in the fall, sixty-seven of those students are now on track. So if we take all the numbers that we see here, we have one hundred thirty-seven students that were moved out of the non, not on track category. So we can say that one in four students went from not on track to on track in one school.
But do you know why? What's important is why did that happen?
Marvin, you wanna talk about how the reading program?
Um, we have a wonders program, can everybody hear me? This is my teacher voice. We have a wonders reading program. We also have a foundations program, which is our kindergarten through second, kind of a phonics-based program. Certainly many more things were going on prior to last year, but last summer, we had all principals trained in foundations, kind of a reboot, because they had originally been trained in that, I think, four years ago when the program first came into implementation in the district. So all the principals were trained. And then we have two district facilitators who, prior to me being here, were trained in, in foundations. And those two, they are two teachers, a title teacher and a general ed teacher. Those teachers went out, it didn't start till second semester, but those teachers, actually last fall, at the start of the school year, offered to host an open house. So right prior to the start of the school year, at an open house where any teacher could go into their classrooms, take a look at what they do, how they do it. I think that that was a great help. And then fast forward to January and February, we made a schedule for those two teachers to be able to go out to all of the classrooms, case through two. Did a little bit of an assessment, had a questionnaire that we developed to say, you know, so they could see a model lesson and see what materials they need. Sometimes teachers need materials and they'll ask for them, sometimes they need materials and they think, well, I don't have the material, so maybe I won't implement it fully. We went out and just assessed, and it was kind of a costly assessment, but we're gonna be getting those materials in here in the next month. Written down some notes, I think, the parent meeting. Every school has to have a parent meeting, I believe it's by September thirtieth, to let all parents know about reading improvement monitoring plans. Those are called REMPs. So they're able to let their parents know that to make sure that they could move them from off-track to on-track. And we also have the wonders training at the beginning of the year for any new administrator to the elementary level and any new teacher. And also we were able to include our intervention specialists, those are special ed teachers, so that they could be grounded in wonders as well. That's kind of the synopsis.
Yeah, I'll piggyback on the, the reading improvement and monitoring plans. So if you, if you are a kindergarten, first, second or third grade student, and you take that assessment at the beginning of the school year, if you're identified as not on track, each one of those students receives an individualized plan where the teachers, the school team and the parents work together on what's best for each one of those students. So there is an individualization, these go through the two.
Number of years ago, my parents' son was severely wounded in Iraq. He lost part of his brain. And when he was recovering, he's in the Marines, when he was recovering at the FEDSA, I visited him one day. And a noted surgeon who could have been making millions in the private sector. Right, like he said, I'd rather serve the troops. And it's important, and I try to tell this to as many teachers as I can. He told me that the most difficult task the human brain is asked to perform is reading. Because it takes so many parts of the brain from, from seeing it, recognizing it, associating it. And, and that's why I think, I always tell that to teachers, because it's so difficult. And what you're doing, I think, is addressing those functions and you've gotta keep, keep doing it.
Thank you. It is an awesome responsibility to teach.
I'm sorry, I have another question. Given the practice and the approach to, you know, student engagement and teacher support and professional development, are we, obviously different models for different subjects, obviously, right? But are there the same type of practices going on across the district, different subjects, areas, different grade levels? Because it's almost, I mean, this is, this is, again, to your point earlier, Mr. President, about it's not raining everywhere. So it's a matter of, you know, taking something like this and how do you, you know, scale that or replicate that, that practice district-wide? So is it an issue of kind of some good teachers who are aligned? Is it curriculum alignment? I mean, what are, what are the issues that prevent us from this type of success in other areas? I'm just curious.
One of the ways that we address that in other subject areas and other grade levels, and, and these grades included, is the OIP, Ohio Improvement Process. And teacher teams meet, and there's a five-step process that we use. And actually, there's six steps, we, we call it step zero. What is it that we're gonna look at? Collection of data is step one. Step two is analyzing the data. Step three is the team putting together a plan of, now that we see our data, whether it's small data or big data, what is it that we can do to reach these students? Are we gonna differentiate our instruction, are we gonna have centers in our classroom, are we gonna have different course offerings? And then determine the period of time that the intervention will be in place. And then step four is to come back and take a look at student success and progress. And then step five is to plan what it is that we're gonna look at next.
Let me ask you this, is that a practice that is mandatory amongst Austin? And how do we monitor that?
It's monitored through, well, each meeting has a set of meeting minutes. And the meeting minutes are, are kept in, you know, you see, you see they're in a binder or it's uploaded to an electronic folder where all that data is collected.
Someone from your office or another office will go in and look at it?
Our office has access to it and also, and also the, the building leadership teams. So there's a teacher-based team, there are small groups of teachers working together. And then oversight and feedback go back and forth between the, the teacher teams and the building team. And there's also a district leadership team where the plan derives from and communication goes back and forth between all three entities.
Question. So if I'm looking down here, I'm tracked for two thousand and sixteen, seventeen kindergarten. Okay, I'm sorry. So in sixteen, seventeen school year, you had two hundred and seventy-four kindergarteners that were on track for meeting versus a hundred and fifty-five. Do you look at all at your partner preschool programs and how that might be impacting children that are starting to come in a little more kindergarten ready?
We do, and we also recognize the fact that I think twenty-nine point six of our students, only twenty-nine point six even participate in preschool. So we have some struggles and, and the goal has been to increase the numbers. But yes, we look at the numbers, we compare different preschools, but I think this year is the first year we didn't have access to that data in the past.
And, and from your own preschools, because the five, because there's five in, in the district, five buildings in your preschool, right? And you're starting to see some improvement?
Significant difference between students who attend preschool and students who do not, yes. But we don't have the information specifically, well, this year we do, we did not last year. I'm looking at Marvin to double check my notes. Will we prepare our preschool with other preschools?
Okay, that was my next question. Thank you.
So those were the key components that were published by ODE. Next, there are some handouts in your packet, in the vanilla folder, I promise they're there. And I just wanted to walk you through the process that we've been using in the school district to deliver data. The initial data set was originally sent out or posted June twenty-seventh and the reports that we just went through in the release last year. So the first handout just shows you, these are all of our students, this is their demographics. And we like our colors, we color-coded students that are limited, basic, accelerated and advanced. And we take these and you can see the trend data that can start to happen from here. You can filter this out any way you want. So we can pull up all third graders and we'll be able to see third graders as a whole. And teachers and principals and ourselves alike can take a look at and start to drill down to, well, what does third grade ELA look like at the district? What is third grade ELA look like at our school? And the teachers have access to the same data and they can also see, how does third grade ELA look in my classroom? So we have it at three different layers. If you flip to the next page, in their packet, I have three of them up here. The first one is a breakdown, so we can start to take a look at trends. This is by building, so the first one here in green is Avram King. And the next one is Frank Asenzo. We take all of the, all of the assessments that are given in that building and look at the, the spread of scores from rated to accelerated, so that we can see trends.
Mr. Ole, I wanted to ask another question, I'm sorry. This is just for my lack of digging, it's right. I don't want you to feel like you're on a high, that it's intricate, I'm just trying to get every step wrong. So you look, you look at Hawthorne Elementary School, so I'm going through here with, with looking at this. And you see thirty-five point two percent of the language arts, you see an accelerated fourth grade mathematics, forty-four percent. Go over to, I mean, so you see social studies, you know, you see PI grade with Bs. A B in mathematics and then a high at C-plus, B minus actually in English, language arts. So some good things happening here, really good things happening here. And what are we doing to, whoever those teachers are in fourth grade, you know, how do we bring them to? I think you characterized how the teachers get together at open houses, people come in. Speak a little more about that, because I think there's something, obviously, really could have come on there. And how do we share that, that, that practice?
The questions in the discussion, the questions that you just had really lead to the same questions that we're asking ourselves, that we're asking ourselves of the data, which leads to our principals meeting and our retreat at the beginning of the, the school year to have all the building principals take a look at this data collectively to set goals, but I'll speak more on that.
Just real quick, what you talked about was highlighting of teacher excellence that's going on across our district. And to get to that point, there's a, there's a layer of trust there, so I could stand in front of my peers and present learning, right? So we've started to engage through our professional, Bill spoke to the professional learning community, but there's a greater, you know, we can do, we can have our teachers leading professional development sessions, and that's starting to happen. We've had some cross-curricular EL sessions that went on this summer. Last PD day, we had teachers at the high school and at the middle school leading assessment literacy training, really trying to tap into our own experts that are having the results. And that's a process that, you know, it takes time to nurture and, and get people to take that courageous leap. But, you know, we have to put that emphasis on it, and those are the things that we're starting to do. And it came through the ideas of our own professional learning committee. So really that engagement piece is what you're talking about there. Identifying through data, through principal instructional rounds, who is kicking butt and taking names? And how do we engage them to lead learning continuously? That's the evolution of what we're trying to do.
Just for the record, I was a, I was a cowboy home side, K three-six at Hawthorne, great school. But I was over there and I met with some, some teachers, I met with the principal over there. And just to, you know, again, teaching excellence, and again, you know, it's one of those things where you see these pockets of excellence, you wanna highlight it. You wanna promote it and, and share it, so that's good to see.
If you flip to the next page, there's, there's one that says annual comparison. If you flip to the next page, there's one that says annual comparison. So just as a balcony view or a high-level view, when we start these conversations that Mr. Richardson spoke of, we take a look at where we're at and where are we going, where are we right now? And this answers, how do the spring scores look in 2016 and how do they look in 2017? So you can see some of the, some of the things that you were just talking about. Where are highs and where are lows? What is it that we're going to do next with them? Another tool that we have, that we developed this school year is, we're going to look at, I'll call them subscale scores, but it's really like, whenever you have a math assessment, it's broken down into five categories: multiplication, and division, fraction, geometry, algebra, just depending on the subject. But sometimes it's difficult to start digging into the assessment and find out where those percentages are. So we're going to be able to provide a tool through our teachers and principals this school year where they simply select a test and they select an area of the test, and it'll give you a table that shows different percentages. And if you're a visual person, it automatically generates a scale so that you can see where the trends are as well. And some of those things stick out, just like you see in the second line on the right-hand side, you see your handout too. You can see that a huge green bar in the middle. So why is that, why are students having that much success in that one particular area in that one school? So our steps moving forward are to take a look at the data, look back at the academic steps and academic recovery plan.
Any other questions, anyone, for Mr. Ole or any of the other staff over here? Thank you very much.
I have some things to say for a while here. And it sounds like we're getting to the right, but I was talking many years, I've looked at some guidelines.
Been treating the symptom, not the cause. Why is one student doing better? What, and that's so important, and that's what Marva was talking about. If you go into medicine today, you're probably going to take the Hippocratic oath at some point. And I saw an amazing quote from Hippocrates. I heard it on a show that was talking about education. And the quote is this, "It's far more important to know the person the disease has than the disease the person has." And I think I saw something in the paper today about starting in the ninth grade and identifying student needs, student by student. Is that correct?
I'm not sure which article you read, but I'm, yes, our goal is to personalize education.
Yeah.
Get to know the children.
And once you do that, then you can prescribe a course for the gifted, highly intelligent kids who need a lot of challenge and to those who need help. And it sounds like we're moving that way, so, thank you.
Okay, so any other comments? Thank you, and again, thank you for those folks who did the presentation.
If I could jump in real quick.
Yeah.
Again, we gave, excuse me, everybody a very large packet. A lot of questions pop up, please shoot them our way. If you shoot them to me, you might want to copy a lot of it, because I am not real quick with emails, so we'll make sure to get the questions answered as quickly as we can.
Thank you. And the next part of this is, let's talk about briefly before we get into some of the extraneous pieces. Mr. Richardson and I, Tony and I, had a discussion some time ago, and I've shared with many of our folks. We were talking about how we wanted to go forward in terms of these meeting schedules. We have, of course, two bodies of governance with respective roles, but that have to work cooperatively in terms of accomplishing the, to get these intended outcomes. And so how do we move forward? I think there's a scenario where there are some shared meetings. There will be occasions where the board meets on its own, the commission meets on its own. There is the sharing of the CEO and how that, so, any thoughts on moving forward with the general idea around meetings? I know you had some ideas, Tony, that you might want to share, and people can kind of think about those, we can talk about those. We know that as a CEO piece moves forward, there'll be more clarity, but I think the general spirit of, of how we want to share space and share resources and people and thoughts and making sure that we're working succinctly. So just anybody's comments on that, or, so I'll let you jump in first, Tony, and then please, it's got to be a piece where everybody has ideas about this. And so how do we do it?
Yeah, I think that it's going to be, so, you know, I was thinking about just the efficiency of, of kind of meetings and updates and reporting. And just wanted to make sure that, you know, you don't have a person in place that, you know, on one evening's reporting to the commission and the next meeting reporting to the school board. I just don't think that's a good use of time. I don't think it's efficient, and I think it's a drain on resources and people's energies and good time. So, you know, in terms of having joint meetings, I think that's something that, you know, I would like to entertain and whoever that CEO is, we could, at that time, talk about the spirit of why we think it's important. We do want to be collaborative, and we think that for purposes of transparency, the school board needs to be informed, as well as the Academic Distress Commission, and us having information at the same time is really vital and important.
Well, the three Cs of success in anything, in my opinion, are communications, cooperation, and collaboration. I call them the three Cs. And if, it doesn't matter whether it's a business, no matter what it is, if those three things aren't there. If everybody doesn't know the same thing as everybody else, and information is being used as a power tool, it's not going to work. And important is the community. The community has to know what's going on in order to get them to understand we're moving forward. So that would be my two cents worth, Mr. President.
So I think what, for example, we know that probably by the time we meet again, there is going to be a CEO. Right now, technically, we are scheduled to meet the first Monday of, the first and third Monday of the month. And that is not altered or changed. But again, there is some, why is this thing going in and out? Do we know? It's tired. Okay, it's tired.
Maybe we ought to get some high school kids to work on our sound and visual, because they'll fix it in about 20 minutes.
Yeah.
Or fifth graders could do it.
You know, so I think we will, we will have meetings. These meetings need to be, they need to be in efficiency, and we need to make sure that the communication that is, that is happening is inclusive of everyone. So I think certain things that we can say in terms of notification, so, and this is for Alena, I think, and everyone, for both groups, whether they're independent or they are in a joint meeting, all of those corresponding communications should be extended to everyone. So there's typically a schedule. We know that our schedule is twice a month. You guys' schedule is what it is. I think even if there is special meetings or whatever, we need to be informed, we should not necessarily meet and you don't know we met and vice versa. I think that's reasonable expectation. Why? Because that's simply keeping track of dates. So, go ahead.
And so I'm going to be clear that it's one school district, right? And that, you know, school board, you have a commission, but I think that we are all, obviously, on the same team and working to improve educational outcomes and educational experiences for students. So that said, I don't know what meeting by ourself would mean. I just don't think it makes sense, right? In terms of, again, you know, you have your treasurer here, you have your superintendent, you have your school board. I think that all needs to be a part of what that meeting looks like, what those meetings look like moving forward. I do not want to essentially inform or in substance run two separate kind of, obviously we separate entities, but, you know, in terms of district's business, I think it's important as a practical matter that, that we meet together and not as individual kind of entities.
No, I think that, I don't disagree, and as the rule, but I think there are exceptions. I think there are occasions when the commission may desire to meet without the board. That's just the reality that may occur. There may be the board desiring to meet without the commission. Though we are one district, we are clearly two separate bodies in certain regards. And I don't think that, but I think what we don't need to do is, I don't want to say, oh, the commission can't meet without the board knowing or without the board being there. But I think we should be in full knowledge of the meetings. I don't think that that's going to be the rule. I think the exception would be meeting outside of that.
Yes, absolutely.
So the spirit, because we're not defining the detailed pieces, the collaborative spirit is that we will share. There will be occasions when you all may choose, because of whatever's going on, that you need to meet as a commission. There might be times that the commission has to call a special meeting, and the board members may not be able to be present. That doesn't mean you shouldn't call your special meeting. There could be circumstances that need immediate action from the commission, and so that's what I'm kind of alluding to, is the spirit of it is we generally meet cooperatively together, but there are occasions where, and so is that seem like that's reasonable?
And talking to former members of the, the former distress commission, they talked about, you know, I think what changes this iteration of the academic distress commission is the fact that there's a CEO in place now, right? That will be in place. And so I just want to make sure that we're on the same page in terms of reporting, that we exchange information in the time we matter, and that everyone has full notice. And if that can be the spirit of the collaboration, I think that works.
From our meeting members, any comments or any thoughts?
Well, both body, both the commission and the board are public bodies.
Yes.
So their meetings have to be announced.
Correct.
They're open to the public, so whether they meet, we meet together or meet separately, knowing when they are is.
But I think there's also.
A legal requirement.
Yes, there are the legal requirements, and we can meet the minimum of those requirements, but not still express cooperative engagement. So I think what we're trying to get to is not looking at the minimum requirement legally, but looking at the meaningfulness of it and how do we create efficiency in that process? This is going to be difficult. There's going to be times, I'm sure, that the board wants to meet to talk about the commission because we're mad about the commission.
Yeah.
And we're going to do it. And there are going to be times that you guys think the board is acting crazy, and you got to meet to have some discussions on how do we deal with this? How do we handle this thing that's off kilter? We have to be able to do that in our respective bodies, but we're doing that because it's in the best interest of the district, and we've got to manage both of these entities. I think that that's just the reality. And if everybody thinks this is going to be this nice kumbaya all the way through, that's not happening. And at any given time, we have to meet to strategize in a public meeting. This is not, you know, this is nothing that's being done under, you know, under the radar. But again, I think the spirit that we're representing is, we plan to meet together, working with the CEO, and, but also we appreciate and respect the autonomy of the groups. And, you know, there's, there's been discussion, I mean, people have said, why would the board meet? And, and people might say they're just meeting to meet. No, the board meets for purpose. And, and this isn't about money, and it's not about that, it's about, these groups are defined and they have that authority to meet. Someone said to me, and I'm just sharing, well, the CEO in Youngstown decided the board couldn't meet, right? The CEO maybe would decide that we don't get paid, but the CEO doesn't decide that we can't meet. We're an elected body of board members and we operate under the sunshine law. If we post the meeting, we can meet whenever, however frequently we wish. They can say you can't get paid. We're not here to get paid. We've never been here to get paid. But to assume that a body can't meet that's been elected and operates under the sunshine law, Mr. Giardini, I don't know if there's anything that prohibits us from meeting except that we abide by the sunshine law rules. So that is, right? But we all, it's not about that, it's about cooperative pieces. And I think the respect that we're showing each other is that our intention for this district is to meet with efficiency, to meet in public, to meet with each other, and to discuss things, and to share in deliberation and decision-making. We're not just going to, we're not interested in being a school board who meets with the commission, and then the commission says, this is what we're doing, we don't have a vote. See, we know we don't have a vote, we have presence, and we have deliberation and discussion. And the expectation is through deliberation and discussion, decisions will be made. We won't always agree, but we will discuss and we'll deliberate. So right now, I think according to the law, you all have the authoritative piece, or actually the CEO really has it, right?
The CEO has it.
Yeah, so, so much of the stuff that we discuss and deliberate, none of us are taking action because the law provides that action to the CEO. So, but there's still work to be done, and there's still discussions to be, to be had. And so, because there's a level of influence. Someone was asking me, we were talking today about voting. Voting's important, but deliberation's more important. Deliberation means that there is discussion going on that helps to inform decision-making. And whether we vote or not, I would like to think that our collective deliberation will impact decisions that the CEO makes.
And I just wanted to be clear that I think in terms of, we're talking about the spirit of what this collaboration looks like, you know, when you look at the statute, the CEO reports to the commission. But what we had talked about is that while, you know, we have the statutory kind of duty, it's important that that CEO communicates, deliberates, and is inclusive for the long-term kind of sustainability of this relationship. Not just commission to board, but commission to CEO, CEO to commission, you know, that triangular kind of relationship. And so, you know, obviously, there's going to be anxiety because this hasn't happened in our community, but I think you have people around this table who are committed to this community, committed to our families, committed to our employees, our staff. And, you know, it's important that, you know, we don't bring in someone that's like a bull in the china shop, right? And we're going to be, we're going to deliberate, we're going to be inclusive, we're going to be transparent. And again, I'll say this for the record, for the seventh time, we're going to be okay, right? And so just keep that in mind. And as leaders of the district, leaders of this community, it's important that we remain level-headed, we communicate, we engage, and that's, that's my piece.
You know, I mean, I think, you know, you guys have seen, we've been engaged for a while, you, I would love to hear from some other commissioners and other folks on their thoughts about this process. And even to the point where I think part of this quote-unquote transparency stuff is how we communicate with each other. How do we communicate information among ourselves? We would be interested in understanding how you guys communicate among yourselves. There's lots of decisions that go on, but what is the process and how deliberative is that process? And this is all part of this dynamic of communication. So please, jump in and share some perspective on this, because there are lots of challenges and questions even about our communication processes as they exist presently. And I think in the spirit of looking at collaborative relationships and communication moving forward, there has to be a sense of confidence that there is some effective communication that exists in our present behaviors. So I would love to hear from someone from you all, you know?
So listen, I'll be the first to chime in. When I worked here at Learning City Schools and was part of a phenomenal staff, both at Larkmore and at Washington, being the instructional leader, I always refer to the term family. We're all family, so we need to communicate. Being that we're family, we're going to have disagreements, we're going to have arguments, we're going to have ups and downs, but at the end of the day, we're family. And I have to say that this, this has been a new experience, I think, for us all. There have been some growing pains I have shared with my commission members that I think communication should be better, needs to be better, and they agree. So I'm definitely on board with the collaborative process. I don't think that we should operate as different entities. I think we should operate together as much as possible and make sure that, just like Mr. Smith said, that information is not a tool that's used for a position of power, but to inform our decision-making going forward.
For me, in my opinion, collaboration is vital. Transparency is vital. We have to make sure if we're going to reinvest in our community, we have to ensure that the partnerships we establish are very good, loyal partnerships. A partnership makes or breaks the leader. Healthy leaders partner with others.
Thank you.
So I think I have a different perspective, since I'm not local. I don't have personal relationships with anyone here. In terms of keeping informed, I read the paper, I read the editorials, I read the emails that are sent to us, and I try to come into this with the frame of mind that we need to do what's best for the kids. Put aside the personal issues, and do what's best for the children. And not being a part of this community, I think it's easier for me to cut through that. And so, I want us all to work together. I think that we can work together, and I look forward to working together.
We need to get some more microphones if we're going to keep meeting like this. This packed past the mic stuff is...
And frankly, I don't know that I need to reiterate what everyone else has said, because I think we all echo the same sentiment, or we wouldn't be sitting here. We're open to communication, transparency, and we want what's best for the kids at the end of the day.
Any sharing, I know...
Yeah. Let me just say this, that my opinion is going to be slightly different up until this point in time. And let me preface my statement. Number one, apologize for the length of my statement, because I didn't get a whole lot of sleep last night. And I had plenty of time between 3:00 and 5:00 AM to put my thoughts on paper, and I don't typically do that. I don't typically talk a whole lot. I think Tim and Jim do that for all of us. And again, let me preface my statements by saying that this, my opinion is at no point in time any attack on anybody personally here. It's my opinion. I'm very passionate about what I do. I've been here for quite a long time, and it is my opinion, as an individual board member, and not a statement from the Board of Education. But again, I put it on paper because, you know, up until this point in time, I've been a little disappointed with the process. And let me first start by apologizing to the students, teachers, staff, and families of Lorraine City Schools. I, as a board member, have failed you. I drank the Kool-Aid that Paulo de Maria and the State of Ohio's politicians served up. I was naive to believe that the State of Ohio was coming in to look, to work with our students and the district to create a better academic system. I was naive to believe that there would be a legitimate process to find the right candidate for the most important position in the history of Lorraine City Schools. I was naive to believe that this commission cared about the academic well-being of each and every student in Lorraine City Schools. I apologize for not fighting harder against House Bill 70 and the State of Ohio's efforts to privatize public education so that their political interests can make money. I am extremely disappointed in the commission's process to select a CEO for Lorraine City Schools. I believe it was a sham, and it was just a political facade. I believe this commission was used by the State of Ohio. There were still, are just a few political puppets for Paulo de Maria and the State of Ohio. There was never going to be a legitimate process for this election. The commission took their one role, their one authority, and potted off on some search firm that knows nothing about Lorraine or our students.
I object, I'm not a puppet. Let's not make personal attacks.
I believe that the State of Ohio selected, it is though, it is. At no point in time has there been any transparency. At no point in time has this Board of Education been informed of any part of this process. At no point in time. And we want to call it a partnership, we want to call it a collaboration. You guys know how I am. I don't pull punches. It is what it is. I don't sing kumbaya and hug it out with people. The reality is the situation where we're at right now. And we got thrown in to a search firm that knows nothing about Lorraine. I don't even know how they got here. We were never informed at any point in time in this process. The search firm never took the time to find out what Lorraine City Schools is about. They never took any time.
We spent two days, 12-hour times, 135 people.
When the president of the firm asked one of the candidates if we even have an academic plan, shouldn't he know that if he's looking for the most important position in this district?
Hey, one second, Tony. Okay, right. So here's what I would like, please, for a point of order, is Mr. Demakia has a statement, he's going to read it, and what we don't want to engage with is the banter back and forth. And no disrespect to you, Tony, please, please, just hear me out. So what's going to happen is, the questions need to be, he can be addressed, he should be addressed. Let him finish his statement, and then, again, we're going to, this is, this is great, this is communication 101, and we're going to figure out how to navigate through some difficult conversations, and that's going to require patience and restraint. There is nothing that's stated that cannot be rebutted, but let's give people the expression, and then, because again, this is not personally to any of us, this is a reflection of how people feel.
To the chair, and I thank you for maintaining order, and I appreciate that, and no disrespect through the chair to Mr. Demakia, no disrespect, right? But at the same time, the personal attacks, and calling people puppets, or singling out individuals, I think as adults, as professionals, I think that is really unethical. I'll just say that.
And noted, again, I'm a puppet. I think, first of all, for me, we're all dangling around. I mean, that's what happens. People pull strings, and we respond. Doesn't mean we're not leading, it doesn't mean we're not engaged. So again, try to, those characterizations, try not to internalize those for everybody, me included, because the first statement that Mr. Demakia made was that he felt he have failed, has failed the district. And so when these expressions are transparent and true, I think, I would also say that, knowing Tony, the words that the puppet word, and these words are much less charged than I know they could have been. So please, just allow that. And again, Mr. Demakia, please try not to...
Shut up.
Well, Jim.
Let Mr. Demakia have the floor.
Mr. Demakia will have the floor.
I just want to maintain a level of professional decor and disrespect. I think that's just what any ordinary human being would deserve.
Mr. Demakia, please continue, sir.
The State of Ohio wants to turn Lorraine into a charter school, and it appears they have taken the necessary steps to make that happen. A large percentage of charter schools are failing, but we wouldn't know that because the State of Ohio was scrubbing data to make these charter schools look better to achieve their political agendas. Some of those charter schools were funded by large Republican donors. Just ask former state superintendent Dick Ross how that worked out for them. This commission selected a firm that made zero effort to find out what Lorraine needs are, a firm that didn't even take the time to look at our academic plan and our current This commission has put all their authority and trust and proceeded to tell this candidate the former commission was decommissioned. This came from the president of this firm, that the former commission was decommissioned because they couldn't get the job done and failed at reforming Lorraine's education system. That is not accurate. That is not what happened. House Bill 70 changed that process. So it was a little concerning that he didn't even understand that. And he probably should. He should probably understand the House Bill 70, what the law states, because it has earned them $25,000 to complete this search. I was wrong. For years, I've been saying that Lorraine is no Youngstown. Lorraine is just like Youngstown. The state failed miserably at fixing Youngstown City Schools. Youngstown is a disaster, and they are working on turning Lorraine into that same kind of disaster. It's my understanding that some of the commission members didn't even know what was going on throughout this process. That also is concerning. They didn't get the opportunity to offer any input on a profile of the CEO, nor make the decision even communicating or working internally together throughout this process as of this point. How can they fix a district that they haven't even taken the time to understand? I should have known better. When Paulo de Maria stated, and I quote, "Poverty is tangentially related to academic performance," I completely disagree. How can a child learn if they don't have food on the table? How can they learn if they are sleeping on the floor with several other kids in the house? How can they learn when they are changing homes every other month because their parents can't afford a home of their own, so they have to hop from relative to relative just to have a place to sleep? How can they learn when they don't have resources available wherever they are staying? How can they learn when their siblings raising siblings? Our state superintendent can't be naive to the poverty and its relationship to academic achievement in a state standardized test. I have been a part of this process, from the drafting of House Bill 70 through all the various amendments. I believe that we had always had a positive relationship with the State of Ohio, and I've said that on multiple occasions. Make no mistake, it is my opinion at this point in time that partnership has declined. Again, we have had zero communication throughout this process of selecting the five candidates that they have selected, and we've had no dialogue about the process besides tonight. It's ironic that they made a press release Sunday prior to this meeting. I can only hope that this commission does the right thing and reconsideres their top five selections. You have one job to do, and for the sake of the children of Lorraine City Schools, please reconsider. Don't make the mistake that Youngstown did because the future of thousands of children rests in your hands. I hope that the citizens of Lorraine understand how bad the situation is for Lorraine, and certainly, next time we have an election, they go to the ballot boxes and vote the state politicians that have failed Lorraine and Youngstown students. Finally remember this. After reviewing the five finalists, come to find out that one of the finalists worked for the search firm that selected him. Another of the finalists is a consultant for the Ohio Department of Education. That's two of the top five candidates. Not sure how this was transparent, and I'm not sure how this was an effective process to select these five individuals. I believe this process was done behind the backs of the district and the community, but also behind the backs of some of the commission members as well. Again, it is my opinion that there's nothing transparent about this process at this point in time. What is really concerning is understanding that the State of Ohio is going to do nothing but set Lorraine City Schools back and eliminate all the good things that we have done by changing the leadership in this district. Once again, our kids cannot afford to have a different leader running this district, have different programs running this district. They need consistency, and they deserve consistency. So again, I appreciate the time. I do apologize if I have offended anybody. It was not my intent, it was just my opinion. And again, I do hope that moving forward, we are transparent, and we are a collaborative partnership. I just don't see it at this point in time. Thank you.
First of all, you don't ever have to apologize for having a Jerry Maguire moment. I think we've kind of all been there, couldn't sleep and just wanted to put our feelings on paper. And I don't think any of us take offense to what you said. I do disagree with a couple of things, and I agree with some as well. Two things I do disagree with is, personally, I don't feel that this, what is happening here in Lorraine City Schools is being done to us by the Department of Education. I don't feel that way. Another thing that I disagree with is, I don't think, or I think it's too soon to compare us or put us in the same pool as Youngstown. I truly feel that we still control our own destiny. I am a little concerned, and I've shared this with some commission members, so I'm not saying anything out loud that I haven't shared with some of my colleagues. I do have some reservations with the candidates being released to the public before we actually had a chance to sit down and look through them ourselves, to see if we all agreed on those that were selected. And just in the spirit of consistency for our students, our staff, our community, and our community partners, I was a little disappointed that our current superintendent wasn't amongst that list of candidates. Outside of that, that's my response.
And I want to add one more thing. I just want to say through the chair to Mr. Demakia, thank you for your passionate words. I mean, again, I took offense just to what I thought was a personal gripe, but again, thank you for your passionate response. And to Mr. Montsulion, I was under, I received the finalist on Sunday, forwarded him to the commission, and got it to the media, because as of July 10th, there was a public records request out there, and I was under a legal duty to, once those things were in my hand, and I'm not breaking the law for anybody, I got it to the media. So, in upholding the law and doing that process in a way that was called for, and legally, I was legally bound, that's why they went out to the media as well. And there are members in the media, and I have records to show, the request for public record.
And I would also like to state that Mr. Richardson did call me yesterday and let me know that that was the process that was going to take place. So I was, it may have seen through my comments that I was blindsided, but I absolutely wasn't.
And I think that's because of this communication protocol which we're talking about. Typically, what would happen in that scenario is, for example, we knew when the part of the search would be finished. We would have prescribed that there would be a special board meeting called, in which at that time, that information would be shared with the board in its entirety. What happens when we start spreading stuff to person to person? So the transparency piece is the obligation to release something to the media that was not, first of all, you hadn't had it yet, so the request could not have been made, right? So the request could not have been made because the information wasn't had. You can't request something that I'm going to get.
Right.
Okay, so, there was no public information request in play for that information. Secondly...
There was a request in play. I didn't have it, so I couldn't turn it over.
If you didn't have it, there was no, okay, check it out.
I didn't have the duty to turn it over, but it was in play. They requested it on July 10th, the date of the application.
I can't make a public relations request for information that's going to be.
Yes, you can.
You can, but you don't have, but you don't have it, so you can't give it to them.
So, so the information belonged to who? The chair or the commission?
The information was in the hands of...
So what happens is, we understand...
The information was in the hands of the search commission.
Right.
The search firm until I received it on Sunday.
And I'm just explaining to you why we have a frustration, because there are board mannerisms that you can engage in that are purely legal. But again, if you guys were satisfied, because I asked this question, were any of you surprised when Dr. Jeff Graham was not a finalist? Answer is yes. So when a body that is your, some people said yes, some people said no. Were you not surprised, or were you? I'm asking the question. Answer, please. I think this is to the spirit of why people assume there's a lack of transparency. We're talking about what's happening. And what happened was, there are, and I've talked to commission members who did not, who were surprised when that occurred. The fact that someone has made a statement that they were surprised that there's somebody in the finals who was a former employee of the firm, that seems like things that you would have given yourself the opportunity to discuss. I'm just, I'm not saying that you're wrong or right or whatever, I'm just saying this is part of why people feel like they feel. And they can be wrong, they can have misinterpreted, but when they're looking at the actionable pieces, it creates a challenge. So, I appreciate you all listening to those pieces, yes, please jump in, and not being overly defensive, because what we're trying to do is create space where we can say how we really feel. And whether we're right or wrong, it's not a who's right or who's wrong, it's how the people feel. Tony, please. And, so you, okay, so, again, these are the things that I think they give us some insight in terms of how do we not have this be the norm? So, now, this is one thing that I did request of Mr. Richardson previous, and again, how do we move forward going forward? Because these things have happened, people feel how they feel. We are requesting that the commission consider allowing two board members to, not to have decision-making process, but to be part of the deliberative process.
Who is "we"?
Jim, let me finish.
No, I'm asking a question. You say "we," who are "we"?
So, as the chair...
No, you owe that to me.
Excuse me, as the chair, I don't, Jim...
You're not speaking for me. Who's "we"?
Jim, exclude yourself, whatever.
You love to say that word "we," but you never tell us who "we" is.
So, as a chair, I'm requesting...
Who is "we"?
So do you think by saying it louder, it's going to...
Yes, I'm going to continue until you tell us who you're speaking for.
So, and gentlemen, please interrupt me if I'm off-base here. If it's possible for two board members to be part of the process of interviewing, not to have a decision-making piece, but going forward, whoever the CEO is, it's very important that we give them the best opportunity to be successful, that they are not subject to certain criticism because of process. And having two members, the previous commission, though they didn't have voting privileges in this, they actually interviewed the candidates and were part of the deliberative process. We're not asking for votes, but asking that they can be, the two board members can be part of that process. And I know that you needed to make sure that that was cleared and reasonable, and I know that you guys need to talk about that. This is an instance where I don't know what process you go through to do that conversation, but I think the interviews begin on tomorrow, correct? It's a question. And if you think it's reasonable or unreasonable, I guess it'd be great if we could have made the request sooner, but there was no opportunity to make the request sooner.
That's fine. We'll, you know, consider that. We need to speak to our legal counsel.
Okay.
May I clarify that he is not speaking for me? I do not think we should be involved in it at all. So, as long as the record shows that, and it better be in the minutes. Mr. Williams does not speak for the board. I've explained that to him many times, which is not funny, Alina. You think you do, but you don't. If you want, if you want that, put it in a form of a motion. Add it to the agenda.
Through the chair, I don't, I don't have a fancy posturing kind of a statement, but I do have one question. So, these consultants that you all hired suggested that these be the final five. My understanding, they interviewed 37 or 51? Pardon me? 37. And they, and they made this suggestion to you all, correct? I'm asking, because as you can tell, we're not satisfied, A, with the, with all the candidates that are there. We have some questions on some of those who are there, and we do have some questions on some of those who are not. I'm asking you all who make the decision, because this consulting group worked for you all, and you are able to add or subtract whomever you choose. I'm asking for me and the constituents that I represent, who I've talked with, that you reconsider and really reconsider adding Jeff Graham back into that mix. That's my request, and I know you all have the power to do that. So, we can't stand and hide behind this firm when this district has been doing some positive motions forward, and we all know that and agree to that. And we all probably should agree that Lorraine was really put into a bad way from the state's perspective. Now, we can't, if we can't have that conversation, we're not being realistic with anyone. And I think it's hard to say, let's be collaborative after I make my decision and you guys just come on and agree with me. That's not real collaboration. So, and I'm not going to debate, you know, how that goes, but as a request coming from Mark, and I'm speaking for me, Jim. I'm asking that you reconsider-
Don't use-
Really adding another element, at least to the interviewing process, because some guy in Las Vegas don't really know what's going on here in the city of Lorraine, when he don't even know the information that he don't know. That's not cool. That's not cool. So, that would be my request to you all, and you guys can make that decision. Thank you so much.
Okay, so, any other comments from anyone? Bill?
Not at this time.
Okay. So, thank everyone for their candidness in-
I just need to make a point of clarification before I go. So, before I assume that, do you guys have the authority to add or subtract who the candidates are before we just kind of nod and ease out of the room? I just need, for the point of order and for the record, do you guys have that authority on who you select, or is the consulting going to tell you who they want you to choose from?
Through the president, to Mr. Baller, ultimately, the decision of the CEO will rest in the, in the, in the hands of this commission. Thank you.
So, please take my request in consideration, sir. Thank you.
All right, so, I guess we've seen how this works, and hopefully, we'll become more nimble at dancing. Thank you to, to our constituency of folks for your candidness and your expression. So, and thank you, Mr. Richardson. At this time, we need a motion to go into executive session for, oh, yeah. How about a second hearing of the public?
Lunch break.
And if, if, if you want, ma'am, can you just come to the, don't even worry about that podium. Just come to the table here and, yeah.
I'm really loud. Okay. Jamie, you're fine?
According to purpose.
Okay. Some of you know me. Don't look at me like that. I won't, I won't go Tony Demakia on you or Jerry Maguire, but I am, some of you want to say I'm an educator, and I am a public administrator in this district, and I'm very proud of that. I work at the-
Your name is?
Megan Burns.
Megan Burns.
Yes. For the record, it is Megan Burns. And I'm disappointed, extremely disappointed. I'm disappointed by the lack of ethics that were present, by this group of headhunters. And I'm disappointed by what's happening here. I was born and raised on the west side of Lorraine. I went to St. Peter's, and I went to learn Catholic. I was very fortunate that my parents wanted me to have a religious-based education. I also went to John Carroll, so I came home because my parents were ill, I'm the youngest of eight. I teach ED students. I teach some of our most marginalized students in this district. And the simple fact that we have a group of headhunters who are not considering who we are as a district and as a city, the fact that Chase isn't here, huh? Oh, okay. Then, I forgive him, I guess. That upsets me. I remember that when I was in high school, Tom Boland was the superintendent, and at that time, we were getting rid of sports and all extracurricular activities. And Tony and Nick came over to learn Catholic, and sort of a couple other public school kids, because we had extracurriculars. But I'm really, really disappointed because I had opportunity. I was given opportunity. And I try every single day that I'm in my classroom to give my kids opportunity, despite the fact that they come from poverty. I don't care if they're boys or girls, I don't care what shade they are today or tomorrow. And sometimes, that's just because they don't have water at home. So, they just might have dirt all over them. I lost my fiancee to mental health, his illness. This school year, we lost one student to his illness and a staff member who we all knew and loved for a long time. And the person who, one of the people who was there for all of us, was that man right there. He opened up this school to our student's family to have a memorial service to, for the entire district to come to.
Can you turn my alarm off, Carrie? I'm sorry.
He has done so much for our community. Dr. Graham has. And I want to know how much has been translated over to the headhunters about who Dr. Graham is. Every time I see Dr. Graham, I run up to him and I give him a hug. And sometimes I knock him over when I do it, but he's never been like, oh, no, crazy Megan can't do that, you know? He's always willing to accept it, you know? And he laughs about it and everything. But in all the times that I have been a constituent here in this hometown of mine, the international city, between Dr. Graham and Dr. Branham, those are the two people who have been able to make this district be a phoenix and rise from the ashes. For the kids, for the staff, for the parents. We have nothing here. We are the biggest employer. The hospital can claim that they are, okay? But we are, and we're not just an employer, we are a family. And our kids can't learn if their social emotional is not functioning. Trust me, I see it every single day. Every day, I cry with those kids. If that brain isn't working, they're not learning. If you need the science-based reports, I'll give you the science-based reports. If you need the latest report out of Philadelphia that children who come from poverty aren't functioning and aren't learning like their counterparts, I'll give you that report. It was just in The Guardian. But these headhunters did us wrong. He gets it, and he's been getting it, and he loves us, and he loves our kids, and he'll come in and he'll sit in our faculty lounge and he'll have heart-to-heart conversations with us, one-on-one. And I think that was probably the first time I ever inundated him with everything about If they didn't take the time to know us, what makes you think that they're going to send someone who is going to take the time to know us as a CEO? There are three people sitting at this table that I know of have some personal attachment to the city of Lorraine. Two of you grew up in the city of Lorraine and went through our schools. If you really want to see an about change in this town, you don't toss people in that have absolutely no clue of our needs besides what textbooks tell them.
You know, it's interesting, in all due respect, through the chair to Megan, I forget your last name.
Burns.
Burns. Thank you for your comments and insight, you know, but when you go back two years ago to when Dr. Graham was applying to our district, and there was a man by the name of Dr. David Hall, who was in this situation, and there had been people who stood up in our community and talked about David's love, passion, 19 years commitment, right? And we brought in who we thought was a stronger candidate. So, I want to be, make sure that we temper this with, I just want to make sure we temper our discussions in that we don't be so quick to judge and point the finger. And to Mr. Monteleone's point earlier is that we control our own destiny, and this is not happening to us. We're in the driver's seat. And to your point about doing what's best for students, doing what's best for the city of Lorraine, that's, that's a non-negotiable for me. And if anyone here knows me and taking this chair position and knowing my background, it's, it's, I stepped into this for an opportunity to do the things you just articulated, so thank you.
And all due respect, Tony, and I see the correlation that you're trying to make, and I wholeheartedly agree, because, you know, I was one of those that was, I had some close personal ties with Dr. Hall. However, the difference between that situation is Dr. Hall didn't have a two-year tenure at the helm of the district at that time. So, we were acting on what we were projecting he would do, where now, we have some pretty concrete evidence of what our current superintendent has done.
And as the commission, I think, when, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, we're tasked with this challenge of taking this school out of, this district out of distress. Obviously, we can't do it alone, right? And so, when you look at the state of the district, we are still in distress, and it's, these issues predate Dr. Graham, in all fairness, but the job hasn't gotten done, right? Our job here is to work ourselves out of existence, to disband this commission. Nothing more would satisfy me than to walk away from this thing three years from now and not be an academic distress commission in the city of Lorraine.
So, don't you think that there needs to be some relationship with the city, and the city then taking itself out of poverty?
So, you have, those are two separate arguments. So, exactly, so the school district's here, and the school district is, to my point earlier about, you know, the budget and the amount of money that, that needs to stay in this district, I agree with that as well. Now, we can get into, you know, economics, are we talking about education, or are we talking about the relationship between the two? When I hear statements about kids who can't learn in these, in these, and poverty is a real phenomenon, we know its effects on the brain, but when we have people who use that as an excuse and automatically, you know, and I'm not saying it's happening here, I'm just saying what happens sometimes in, in urban districts across this country is that we write off kids because we assume, right? Before, before we go out and we even start to diagnose, or we, we, we assume, not just because of the poverty, but there's also issues around color, there's issues around gender. And when you look at this equity audit that happened, again, let's, if you want to really talk, let's talk, right? So, like, it's not about personalities, right? It's about the reality of this district, and we have to work together to move the district forward. Now, I won't get into a back and forth, but I see your passion. I'm passionate as well, and I hope in moving forward that we can work together.
And I would say, to your point, we've got to do who's best, what's best for this district. But when I look at the candidates that did make the cut, there's two or three of them that have never ran a district, and I'm just not sure how we can take someone who's turning this one around and improving this one, and put people in that race who've never run a district, and say that they could do a better job than someone who has experience of multiple districts. That's, that's just very, very, I don't understand that, that, I don't understand that, but-
I was perplexed with the absence of Dr. Graham, only in that if, and this is, maybe, maybe I'm wrong here, and you can correct me, from the feedback is, his candidacy, and correct me if I'm wrong, his, his interview was more of a courtesy, because the way the interview portrayed it is that he wasn't necessarily really being considered. And, and that's, that could be okay, but I think that was never shared. We've been going at this, our, the last 18 months of our engagement with ODE and the governor's office was this. We knew that we weren't going to decide who was, whether he was going to win or not, but to not put him in the race, to disqualify him based on a phone interview, when the only thing that we were hoping is that he's in the race, lose, win, draw? So, again, we've done lots of searches. This isn't new. This is not like it's the first time this has been done, and I'm expressing to you the frustration that we have with the absence of that candidate. Is that accurate for some of us?
And Mr. Williams, you're not speaking for me?
I'm never speaking for Jim.
I'm very satisfied.
For the record, going forward, whenever, whenever I say "we-"
This is, by the way, this is hearing of the public. Why don't you let the public speak?
When, you're talking, Jim. You don't look public to me.
Because there's a lady waiting to talk.
Whenever, for the record, going forward, whenever I refer to "we," I am definitely not talking about Jim Smith.
Thank you.
There you go.
Can the woman speak now?
Come on.
I can speak for-
All right, good evening, all my friends, okay. My name is Loretta Jones, and I am a retired administrator and teacher for Lorraine City Schools. My heart, this young man, we raised him right over there at Hawthorne Boom, okay? What I like here is the strong leadership that is looking at me, okay? One thing I would say to this, to, to, in this room tonight, I like the way they organize to go and out back and select a CEO, okay? I think we talk a lot, we talk so much, we forget what we're here for, because these babies are waiting for us, okay? They're waiting for us. And if these people here could get the job done in a matter of a week, about 25th, am I correct, you got to have a CEO selected, then you got to do the job. That's what you have to do. Because I think we all need to rehouse Bill 70, okay, at this point. Now, the last thing I'm going to ask to all of the commission, as a sub in the district and a, and a teacher, what I see based on 10 years ago and today, we have some angry babies out there. We have some hurting babies out there. And the one thing that's- And the one thing that's needed in elementary schools are counselors, our social workers. These principals and the teachers need somebody that they can send these little babies to too when they come crying. Because see what happens, we get them, and they get reniled, okay? And we don't have nothing in here to gait this baby and console him, other than we as the principal dragging with them down the hallway. Because that's what we have to do, that's the job. So, my plea to you, bring one thing to this district, is resources at the elementary level. Thank you. All right? Uh, you have my support all the way. Thank you. All right.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Yes.
Is, Loretta, you going to speak again?
Yes, I am.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, it's, I know it's past my bedtime, too.
Yeah, girl.
My nurse is down there waiting for me, but, but I, I can't leave right now, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Now, number one, uh, I've listened to what all of you have to say, and you know, I've been around here in the Lorraine City School District for how many years? Almost. And, and I have to say, you are bringing up the subject of Dr. Graham. Dr. Graham, know how I felt about him when he first hit the Lorraine City Schools, and what my problems were with him, were they not?
You brought it up.
I, I let him know, and I let him know the feelings and the job, our concerns, as Loretta said, are our kids, basically, and what has to be done. Our children are hurting, you all want a House Bill, also set up a House Bill for these parents and what their responsibilities are, and what they should be doing in terms of getting in here to see that our children and their children are getting the proper education. Yes, we need to do a lot at the elementary level. As Loretta says, we need counselors who are going to be in there counseling these children. Tony, you came up through this district, you know counseling is one of the most important issues and things going through your young life. I see you're going to grab it, yes, I'm telling it. And the fact that we have to have the resources, we have to have teachers and educators who care, number one, who come in from the suburbs to teach our children, and then they go and they take our resources and our tax dollars out. But yet, their kids are not a part of what our district is all about. How many teachers do we have to stand at the door when the kids that come in and tell them, "Good morning, how are you doing? Is everything okay?" Yes, we have students, we have a problem in this system with our special ed kids, and with our kids transitioning from preschool into kindergarten. This is what we need to be looking at. Yes, Dr. Graham, he's been here for two years. I let him know, but I have seen firsthand, and I would say, some of the policies that he's put in place that are becoming new. We want to do something, let's get to the state, let them, let's let them know. Yes, this is a takeover, and we know what it's all about, but no one wants to really say anything. We have elected our people here, let's look at, if the state wants to help us, come in, help us to get the district straight, along with who we have decided should be our superintendent or CEO or who. I do not feel, and will never feel, that the process that we utilize, and stop comparing us to Youngstown. Am I, do I look like I'm a bad person? Or I'm not knowledgeable? Guess what, guys? I came out of Youngstown School District as a child. My family was not rich, they were not middle-class, they were black, and I was in segregated schools. Let's make no mistake about it. Even though we talked about the north and the south, our schools were still, to a great de, in large degree, segregated. And we came through that process. We are the ones that have not been concerned about it. Let us all bear the responsibility that has been placed upon us to see that our children are nurtured and educated, not thinking about the monies or what, but thinking about that child and the needs of that child, and what that child is going through. Is that child coming to school that morning through some trauma, not of its own making, but perhaps of the parent, being in a single-family household? You don't know what that child has seen that night before? If that child is eating? If it had breakfast this morning? And it's just not here. Stop blaming everything, I don't like the, even the titles that you use, Lorraine City Urban School District, which urban denotes minority and poverty. It is Lorraine City Schools. All of these children are our children. It's not about, yes, we have diversity here, this is the international city, then we better become international. Because what we're doing now and what we're going through and what our children are going through is ridiculous, and we're not doing the proper thing about it. Everybody's around here mostly, and that's not, take it out, it's all politics. Let's get politics out and education in.
Thank you, Loretta.
I just wanted to say, I just want to say one thing, um, I'm hoping that, that we're all successful at this, but I've been here for eight years, I've had four superintendents, okay? And I just wanted to say that I, I hope you give Dr. Graham consideration, because I think he's the best out of all of them, and I, I think with us working with him, I think he gives us the best chance to be successful. That's my statement.
Yes, please come on up.
I'd just like to make a comment. I'll stand right by Loretta, she's my girl. Yeah. Um, I've worked with, I'm Bambi Dillon, 228 Delaware Avenue, Lorraine, Ohio. I've volunteered for the city, in the city, for 43 years now, but in the district for over 20. And, like I've said in the last, he said four, he's worked with, I've worked with five superintendents.
It might have been five.
And when I say that, I feel like we're the Cleveland Browns. We change every other year. No system gets into place, and that's part of our problem. We are changing what we're trying to teach every other year. A new superintendent comes in, we get a new school board, and we get a new committee. And we're all here for the kids, but it's always a different step going forward, and I really respect all the teachers, administrators, because I don't, I would go crazy if I had to change every so many years the process. We have to be consistent. I hope that all of you get along well, because that's what I, I'm a hugger. I hope you all embrace each other. I know you're all here for the kids, just as the school employees of Lorraine City Schools. I have great respect for them, because like you had said about the kids. When I, that's why I started really to volunteer more into the schools, because I was at South U volunteering mostly. When they say about the kids not having food, not having clothes, not having a place to go home to, that's why I decided I want to try to make a difference, because I saw that administration and that staff take kids home, make sure they have food, make sure they have clothes, and I thought, wow, Lorraine City Schools just isn't about education, it's about caring about kids. That's the first thing you have to do. You got to get them to school before you can educate them. And that's one thing that I liked about Dr. Graham's programs, he's trying to get the kids to school. And the second thing, he embraced Lorraine, you wouldn't even be able to tell he wasn't from the city of Lorraine. And he's the only superintendent that gives you his cell phone number and says, "Call anytime when you have a problem." So, please, let us not be the Lorraine Browns. Let us bring Lorraine City Schools and move forward, and I, I wish you all luck.
Thank you. Okay, so, our next scheduled meeting, oh, come on up, sir, I'm sorry.
One more. First, my name is Joe Basconi. I'm born and raised in Lorraine. Uh, I've been attending board meetings recently, usually sitting off in the corner there quietly. This is the first time that I've heard Mr. DiMachia speak, and this is the first time that, no, I know Mr. DiMachia's name because he's a fellow Italian. I don't know the name of the gentleman to his right. This is the first time I've heard you speak, and I congratulate both of you for speaking, and I agree very much with the statements that you made. I had attended both meetings of that, uh, you know, the search committee. I was not only not impressed by them, I was depressed by them. I thought it was too short, very shallow, and I'm disappointed in their findings. I've got to know Dr. Graham a little bit. I met with him personally, very gracious, and I was very disappointed when I read in today's paper that he was not one of the final, of the finalists. So, I hope that you five people consider, uh, consider him for the CEO position, and that's all that I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next board meeting is scheduled for, um, August the 7th, and that might be a joint meeting. Um, you guys can discuss that and get back with us, um, but that is the official meeting, um, and so that announcement is, is out there. Um, there might be circumstances that alter that date, or that meeting, or whatever, but on the record, that is when the next scheduled meeting is. So, I need a motion for adjournment, please.
Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. DiMachia?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
And also, uh, cross for motions to retire as well.
This has been a production of Lorraine City Schools TV20 WLCS.